Good morning, this is the Cochise County Board of Supervisors Work Session Tuesday, April 3rd, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. Board of Supervisors Hearing Room 1415 Melody Lane Building, she in Bisbee, Arizona, 85603 pursuant to ARS 38431.02H. The public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by telephone, video, or internet conferencing. Members of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams, computer, or mobile app, or via phone by calling (602) 609-7513, or (888) 680-6714. Conference ID 735278652. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call (5204) 329200 for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments shall not be taken. Introductions. I am, oh, we should do roll call. Okay, Crosby from District 1 is here, District 2.
Gomez is here.
And District 3. We are missing Mr. Antonori, or perhaps he's listening in, and we will hope to get ahold of him later. We have Ms. Sharon Gilman, and Mr. Joe Casey, and others in the audience. So, items for discussion, Board of Supervisors. Number 1, review agenda items for the Board of Supervisors Directors Meetings and Work Sessions for the week of April 6th, 2025. Ms. Gilman, would you care to brief us?
Sure. So, before we get to the regular meeting, we'll start off with Monday, April 7th. We have a work session on the county budget, early projections, revenues, expenses, and our expenditure limits. So, we've been working on myself and Stacy Fenhouse, our budget manager, to pull together some of our known expenses that have increased, that we just know as a county government that we can expect to see. We'll total up some of the funding requests we've received from the various departments and elected offices, and present that total. And then our expenditure limit, which is a constitutional requirement by the state that we can't exceed a certain dollar amount every year. We'll talk about that more. So, we'll have a PowerPoint for you. We'll be submitting that later today for the board to have a preview of. And, yeah, it should be an interesting discussion because there's lots of unknowns still. We don't know what the state or the federal government's doing in a lot of areas. Agenda for this special board meeting then on Tuesday, or Monday, as well, at 11:00. We have, this is just similar to the, this is a follow-up meeting on the county administrator job description. So, that's the resolution related to the county administrator position. I did some edits based on our last discussion about a month ago, and sent that to each board member for review. It'll be attached to this agenda item for discussion as well, and other thoughts. Then, we have the library district meeting. That's just the minutes and demands for the library district on Tuesday. The flood control district similarly, no action items on that agenda. And the jail district has some items, just consent for minutes and expenditures. Then, we have the regular board meeting. So, real quick, before we get too far into it, I want to let the board know that item number 9, under County Sheriff, has been pulled and removed, as that item does not, it's a standard operating thing that doesn't reach the level of firing board.
Is everything else going to be numbered the same, or is this going to be completely gone, and everything after that will be?
Everything. Okay, I think that's the only change I have. So, we start with consents. Which page are we on? You are on, if you're on this label document. So, since we have basic items regarding minutes. Emergency Services has a few items that they need to move between different departments, and it's a pretty routine nature. But Dan DeShawn is here if you have any questions about that.
Mr. DeShawn. How big is a vehicle fire blanket?
Yeah. Oh, I don't know. It's on the, it's on the order form. I mean, it's gotta be 10, 12 feet by 10, 12 feet. Give me a little grace with that. It's big enough to go over a vehicle.
And that's what you throw on when the kids from the fires, that's what, what does it do?
It's designed for electric vehicle fires, to smother it. Normally, water just rolls off and doesn't actually stop the fire.
That's all the questions I have. I think it's noteworthy. Is it true that these batteries continue to produce electricity while they're on fire?
I don't know. I can't answer that question.
That's what I've heard.
I don't think anybody's actually tried to touch it while it's on fire.
Thank you, Mr. DeShawn.
Have a proclamation that will be attached to the agenda item regarding, from First Things First, just to recognize April 5th through the 11th is the week of the young child in Cochise County. This is something we've done every year. It's just an opportunity to shine a light on the work of First Things First.
Do you know who will, somebody gonna read something to that effect?
Were we planning to read it, Laura?
Yes, they would like it read if that's possible. And I was thinking maybe Supervisor Gomez could read that.
Okay. So, is that, when you do a proclamation, do you have a little piece of paper to get up, and you may take a picture, and then you say something?
Yeah, so Representative from First Things First, Melissa Vont, said she will be here. So, you can take your picture with her after reading.
Okay. And you guys prepare the statement, or do I?
We have the proclamation.
Okay.
Then, number 6 is, after last week's meeting, we had a discussion on meeting procedures, and part of that discussion was the invocation policy and procedure. So, based on that, our county attorney, Paul Crea, created a resolution that encompasses the points from that discussion.
Okay. And we'll be able to see that?
Yes, that'll catched as well for your review.
Okay. So, we'll be voting to approve it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And approving a grant award. I see our county school superintendent, Dr. Jackie Clay, is here. If you have any questions about the grant award, it's Silver Springs Valley Electric Cooperative.
I don't know that I'd have questions, but you're welcome to tell us about it if you want.
Yeah.
Written up this really nice synopsis for you, because I knew you was gonna ask. If you come on this way, you should be able to tell us about it. Okay. This is the Community Share, okay? Does access to community resources and connections is vital to the success of our youth and their families, and the educators support them. Unfortunately, educators and youth in Cochise County face significant barriers to assessing these essential human resources. The Community Share Project aims to bridge this gap by facilitating connections between educators, community partners, bringing real-world learning into the classrooms. Through the Community Share Platform, educators in Cochise County will have a digital space to connect with local professionals, businesses, and organizations. This platform will enable them to co-create, engage in learning experiences that spark student engagement, curiosity, and learning. Educators can create profiles, post projects, event ideas, and find community members willing to serve as guest speakers, mentors, project advisors, and most importantly, provide internship opportunities. Community partners will also create profiles on the platform, offering their skills, knowledge, and experience to students through mentoring, project-based learning, guest speaking, and volunteer internship opportunities. This initiative provides a unique opportunity for community members to share their expertise with the next generation. I believe this initiative will foster economic development and connect people with similar goals across the county, increasing the likelihood of economic independence for our students and economic success for our county. It will also provide motivation, direction, and purpose, and most importantly, opportunity to our future leaders, inspiring them to stay in Cochise County and continue our legacy.
What type of internship are you talking about?
Any type of internships across the board. We're talking about CNA. We have all organizations, all these businesses across our county who want to offer these opportunities for our students, from Wilcox to San Simone to Douglas, et cetera, et cetera. But getting all of them on one platform where everybody can see it and buttons can be pressed in, yes, I'm interested. We're talking about medical, we're talking about HVAC, we're talking about business, we're talking about every single job opportunity that takes this, makes this county move forward. The thing is, kids being in school is not enough. I believe that the community is the whipped cream and the cherries of education. And the thing is, the community members are right now willing to do it, but with us, we have a very, our bandwidth is not that wide. So, we have to figure out a way to evolve and not just have these small venues, but if we pay for this platform, and if you look up, Pima County has the same thing. Pima County works with the Health Department and a lot of other big organizations, and they all go on this platform. And if you're an educator, you click here. If you're a business, you click here. And then we bring them together, and it works.
What about government? I mean, do you have, one of the things that I found that was really helpful when I was in the school board in New York City was getting kids involved with civics, or getting them involved in, you know, in how the county runs, or in some kind of government. I mean, I would love to have an internship. I don't know if we can. We have to talk about that, but for here at the county, someone like me, because I think that that's really going to be key going forward, is to, you know, grow leaders, right?
Absolutely.
Especially in government. And that's something I think that's kind of been lacking in Cochise County.
We have the opportunity now.
Yeah.
Everybody now, and I always thought people, education is not a spectator sport. Everybody has to, so this gives the whole county the opportunity to find, I call them, their many needs. You're gonna shake those trees, and those people have your same type of attributes. You're gonna find them, or they're gonna find you. And then you're going to mentor them, and you're going to inspire them to stay in the county and to take your place.
So, when you think of this growing, you know, maybe not this year, but in the future, think about civics. I don't know what you call government involvement, or what do we used to call it? I'm trying to remember. Because that's how you get advocates, right? That they learn how to work, not work the system, but work within the system so they can achieve certain things. And politics and government is everything. So, I think it's a really good kind of opening, because that's what, then, you know, kids like, well, if I knew, if I knew how to run, if I knew what these jobs were, if I knew how the government worked. And I think they would see that it's so important, and being involved in it is so important. So, just in your, you know, when you're mine, when you're going forward, think of that aspect, and I'd be willing to help you with that.
Well, once we have it up, the size of limit, you can go ahead and do it.
Okay.
It's not me doing it now. Now, you have the full opportunity to put your name in there.
You can.
Say, I want somebody to be my intern, or I want somebody to shadow me, or I want to go to an Apache School District. There might be somebody who's interested in politics. You'll see that.
Okay.
You go to Apache, or you arrange for them to come here and spend the day with you.
That would be great.
So, instead of us being the middlemen.
So, we go right to them.
You're going straight to them, and, and, which is so much better.
Yeah.
And you're also talking about our next, the next thing that's up on the agenda when you're talking about civics.
Okay.
We have a project that specifically has to do with civics.
Great.
Yeah, the other nice thing about the platform, too, just to jump in there, is it allows for project-based learning. So, teachers can put projects in there that they're interested on working on, and draw from the community, not only for, you know, donations if they're working on a STEM science project. And in terms of government, I plan to use this platform for the anonymous tip line that we're putting in for the school safety grant, because I want the students to drive the tip line, because if the students aren't grounded with it, they're not gonna use it. So, they'll be able to use the platform to help create, you know, informational videos and things like that, and work together on the project, and understand how the grant funding works, and kind of getting that out into the community. So, the project-based learning is also a really great asset.
And like, the comprehensive plan is a great, you know, kind of idea, because that comprehensive plan affects everything from housing to education to environmental and stuff like that. So, if they could understand how important it is
Yes.
to be involved, and to say, hey, this is how I want my county to look like in 10 years, that will help them stay here.
Yes, that's what we want to do.
Okay. Oh, I'm very excited about it.
I love it.
Have we moved to item number 8, or are we in the process of moving to?
Yeah.
Okay. Who runs the Student Advisory Council? Do students run that, or?
So, I'm gonna read that one to you, too.
Okay.
All right. The Student Advisory Council aims to empower students who are central to the mission of the Cochise County Superintendent's Office by providing them with a platform to voice their opinions at the county level. This council helps students develop leadership and teamwork skills while addressing educational challenges locally through effective communication. By fostering civic engagement, the initiative encourages students to drive positive change within their schools and communities. Additionally, the funds will support field trips, training, and conferences where students can engage with state-level leaders and enhance their interpersonal skills through peer-to-peer and peer-to-professional interactions. Students apply to join the council, and ongoing recruitment efforts ensure representation from across the county. The Student Advisory Council has identified bullying as their primary concern, and is currently developing an anti-bullying awareness campaign. They plan to present their campaign to this board in the near future, followed by a presentation to the State Board of Education in July. So, they're already on, on, on the agenda for July. Currently, we have 15 representatives from the following schools: Benson 1, Buena 1, Colonel Smith 1, Wachuka Mountain Elementary 1, Joyce Clark 2, Naco 2, Naco 1, Joyce Clark 2, Palominos 1, Pierce 2, Peptech 2, St. David 2, Town and Country 1. If approved, this donation would significantly expand the capabilities of the Student Advisory Council. It would provide essential funds for travel, learning materials, in-person meetings, training, conferences, and their anti-bullying awareness campaign.
So, when you do the next round of getting advisory councils, does anyone in your department, or if you gave it to me, I would go and present it to the Douglas School Board, because they had an active, like, kind of student council, but hearing that they're not involved, maybe just that they don't know about it. One of the biggest things I find, and just because I've dealt a lot with the Douglas High School, or the whole system, is kind of a lack of getting the information out there. So, my brother-in-law's on the school board, and so this is something that he would be really, you know, he was a supervisor of the Board of Patrol Station here. This would be something he would love to push, to try to get involvement in, you know, one of our high school students involved. So, if you can send me that stuff so that I can make sure. I don't know, when do you elect your new council? Is it a year?
Well, it's not. It's, we, it will just continue.
So, they can always join at any point in time.
Yes. And the thing is, I have all the school board's emails. See if he's getting my email.
I will.
Because I send all the school board members and all the superintendents, you know, everything we're doing. Sometime, it's not, I will tell you, Douglas is one of our superstar school districts. It's just right now, they're doing so many things right now, that it's probably that this wasn't on their plate.
I just want to make sure I pushed it on their plate. I'm a big proponent of having kids.
Absolutely.
Because when they learn, you know, I took those school buses up to Albany from 1st to 5th grade. They're all now becoming, they're political leaders. And I think when you get them that young.
Absolutely.
And they're not afraid of talking to adults. They learn how to talk to legislators. It makes a big difference. So, that's kind of like my little.
I will just make, I'll make sure you get the information. And also, the Douglas mayor.
Oh, who's there is great.
I was invited him at a event at the Mexican Council, and he says, Jackie, we want to be the first group, other than, you know, the Board of Supervisors and the State Board. We want to be next in line for you to come and have the students brief us. So, he's already, he's already on board.
Yeah, he's great. Okay, cool. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Clay, does your office do anything related to military recruiting?
No, we don't.
Just curious.
We don't, but I have, that's not basically in our realm as far as Title 15, but because I work with the Garrison Commander, and when I'm working with him on, we have meetings every other month, and they're there, all the schools are there, okay, et cetera, et cetera. So, we do have those conversations.
Okay.
But it's not my focus in my strategic.
I understand. You leave that up to the specific schools and recruiters.
And recruiters, they have, they come and give me stuff. I have a lot of their bullying, et cetera, et cetera, and we give it out to students when they come, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, we, we augment, but we're not, we don't have a campaign to actually debate.
I understand. I don't have any more questions. Is anybody else still have questions?
That's it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very exciting. Okay.
Thank you for your support.
Sure.
As we noted, we are gonna skip item number 9, and we're gonna move to item number 10. And I believe Marisol Venteria might want to talk to us about this. Would you care to address this about item number 10, Marisol?
If you have any questions regarding the?
Doc Resolution 25-06 to approve three vote centers for the 2025 special primary and general elections for Congressional District 7, as listed on the task exhibit, and authorize the election director to make substitutions as necessary prior to each election, in the event that a vote center replacement needs to be made in accordance with ARS 1601.
Right. So, do we know the dates? I keep on, you know, I know I've heard them, but can you tell me the dates of the primary is?
Yes. So, July 15th is the primary, special primary, and September 23rd is the special general.
Okay. And we're having, the voting centers are gonna be Douglas County Building, right?
Yes. Douglas, Bisbee, and Palominas will be the three vote centers.
And the Bisbee is here?
Yes.
And Palominas is, okay. The Firehuts?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I understand correctly, primary July 15th?
Correct.
And general election September 23rd?
Correct.
Okay. And this is, we're talking Naco, Bisbee, and Douglas, right? Basically, and some of the little area out by Palominas is the ones that are gonna be voting. And then, what are the hours gonna be for the voting centers?
6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
And mail, is it gonna be, I didn't get mail. So, they'll receive their mail ballot by what day?
They should be going out June 28th, if I remember that correctly.
June 28th, okay. And then they would have two election day, I mean, they could come in, eventual stuff, too. Okay. Do we know about how many people are active voters?
Yes. So, for those precincts, there are 17,775 active voters.
Okay.
And of those, there's 12,733 on AVEL, on the early voting list.
Early voting. And so, you know, people still aren't even aware. There's, there's a real confusion between people knowing who represents them. You wouldn't think it, but in Douglas, people still think they're like, with, you know, what they used to be. They don't realize that Rahava, it was a representative. So, how are we gonna spread the word out about this to get people to come to the ballots? Do you, what do you guys do?
So, there's been a proclamation that has been posted on the website as well. It's going to be posted in the newspapers as well. I don't know the exact date that that's going to post.
Maybe we have to go like a?
Absolutely. So, our Public Information Officer Jane will post a lot of social media information as far as voter information, where to vote, how to vote, what you're voting for, where to find information on the candidates, that kind of thing.
And then we will be mailing out sample ballots as well.
But I think what's really gonna be kind of a nice step is, you know, to get the call if I'm live, you know, get on the different Douglas, Bisbee, and Naco Facebook pages, because that's where everyone is. And just, you know, I'll work with Jane on trying to get that out so people are aware of it, because they still can't believe it. They're like, no, we don't. That's not us. Yeah, it's you. It's Douglas. But now, and I should know this, but Perterville is part of it, too, right?
Yes.
Okay. Doesn't go as far as Elfrida, right?
No.
No. So, it's just Perterville, Douglas. Yeah, it's a little town like that, right?
Yeah. Bisbee, Douglas, Naco, Palominas, Perterville, and Three Canyons.
And Two. Good. So, would it be Precinct 52?
Precinct.
That would be, you know, east of Douglas to the New Mexico border?
Right.
Precinct 50?
I don't think it goes. Yes, Precinct 52 is part of it.
Okay. So, we go, we go all the way up to Portal, or does it, this is like, so it just goes along the board?
Yes.
They gave away the two.
Well, I wonder if they got something for it.
Yeah, they got, they got Santan, and they got Cossarone.
So, if you're in Precinct 50, it doesn't necessarily mean, depending on where you live, that you're gonna vote for the seat. It's just people who are gonna live on it, right?
Precinct 50 is not.
But it's, so it's not at all?
No.
Okay. So, it's just gonna stop at the city limits of Douglas?
Yes.
The craziest thing I've ever seen. Okay.
We can give you a full map.
Yeah, we'd like a full map. It's really hard for me to find one.
I have a map right here.
County website.
County website.
It's the black lines on the bottom.
Oh, so all these?
You look at elections, how do you find it on the county website? I kind of accidentally stumble across it like I usually do anything on the computer?
For the map itself?
For the congressional map, and also the legislative district map.
So, on our main site, on the Cochise County main site, there is a button that says GIS on it. And if you go there, there's a different mapping for districts.
So, you're saying all this is black here, right?
Just the black area.
It goes up like that? That's the two? What is this? That's Bisbee, New, that's the mountains, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And it comes back down. Okay. I see where it ends. That's the line. This is the craziest thing I've ever seen. Okay. Okay, good. And so.
The rules say you're not supposed to do that, but they did it anyway.
Well, they should be, they should be all shot. I'm sorry. I didn't see that. With buckshot. Because this is the worst cherry-mandarin case I've ever seen, and there's no, there's constant confusion. And then, then, you know, nobody knows who, that were actually LD19 and Congressional 7, and then where another thing for state in this area. So, you have three different totally representations, and they don't talk to each other, because nowhere else are they involved with each other, except this little tiny strip of, you know, 17,000 people.
Well, since you have, I definitely found that map, can you plan us the supervisor district maps?
Yeah, that would be great.
And they'll show you some more terrible, Jeremy. And that's, that's the little salamander tail going from my district to the river.
Really?
Really. At least it will, unless they undid it. But last time I looked at one, it had that little.
Okay. So, so you get that. That's one, two, three. I'm sorry, do you know how many precincts involve, five precincts? And would that be?
Zoom into the northeast part of District 1. Yep. Then we have a little, go further north. Yeah, see, I got a little, a little salamander tail going to the river. See that?
Yeah, that, oh my goodness.
Everything else is square, except for the salamander tail. There you go.
There you go. So, Katie, I'm sorry, do you have the precincts? You can just run off for me?
So, do you want the numbers?
Yeah, just the numbers.
Okay. So, it's four, five, six, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 18, 19, 20, and 52.
And 52? Isn't there one person in 52? And 52? Isn't there one person in 52?
So for 52, no, it's actually 53 that only has.
Okay.
Or 54.
Okay, great, that's, that's a lot, that's good, good case for me with them.
Do we have any more questions for Ms. Venteria? Do you have any more comments for us?
Just wanted to make the comment that we will have early voting in Douglas on June 21st and June 28th also for this year.
June 21st? Are you having any here?
Yes, we'll have our, our normal early voting here, three quarters.
At the Recorder's Office, okay. So June 21st and then?
June 28th.
28th, okay, so June 21st, the weekend before they can come in and vote. And that's like on a Saturday, same things?
Yes.
What are the hours for that one?
That one will probably be eight to five.
Eight to five, okay. I'll make sure that, that the Douglas City Council announces it a lot too, because some people tune into their, their meetings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 11, we probably will hear from Ms. Jackie Watkins if you care to address this this morning. And I'll just read this, it says, "Approve Intergovernmental Agreement IG 24-0010929-1, Whitewater Drop Bridge ST." What's ST?
Structure.
Structure, okay. Number 08109 between Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, Cochise County, and the amount of 127,000 at a local match of 7,635 effective upon signing of all parties through the completion of the project. And I would like to know, first of all, where is it?
Well, this is Whitewater Drop Bridge, it's on Rucker Road. It's a wooden one-lane bridge. So there's a 5-ton load limit on it, and being a wooden bridge, it's, maintenance keeps having to replace the deck, the wooden deck. So this is, off-system bridge funds are federal funds from the transportation. And they're to do bridges that aren't on a road that could be qualified for grants for other type of construction. And so this bridge was built, it's 86 years old. It has a structural deficiency of 23.4 out of 100. I mean, it's, you know, that's why it has a 5-10 load limit. So this will replace it. This is just a scoping study. So we have the funds to do a scoping study. Then we'll go out for funds to get it designed. And then we'll go out for funds in the same program to get it constructed. So it'd be at least three years.
Ms. Hagel, can you hear her over the microphone? Okay, thank you very much, very much. Just wanted to make sure.
So, yes, so this is, it's the, it's the wooden bridge on Rucker Road. And we've applied for two more bridges, so we, we apply every year to try to, we have 62 bridges in our system.
I believe it's still there.
How much of it is wood?
Well, it has steel deck underneath it, steel tresses, but the top that you drive on is wood and the railing on the side is wood. It's one, I mean, it's a neat bridge, you know, being one lane, but we would update it with a two-lane bridge.
We're not really looking for the rustic thing, we want it to not fall apart.
Right, no.
Any more questions for Ms. Watkins?
Nope.
Guess not, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And next, we have Ms. Suzanne Hagel. And she is going to tell us about number 12, "Approve CTR 063847, Amendment to Arizona Prescription Drug Overdose Prevention Program Between the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, Cochise County Health and Social Services, CCHSS, in the amount of 247,270 for the period of September 30th, 2024 through September 29th, 2025." Ms. Hagel, thank you for coming down and to talk to us today.
Sure, so this is just an amendment two, there's been no changes from amendment one. The only difference is that we're transferring some of our community health worker salary to this budget. But otherwise, the deliverables stay the same. We still have the, this contract covers the linkages to care program, the naloxone distribution, and some trainings. And then it also covers the overdose fatality review summaries.
So you and I, we emailed back and forth about this a little bit. And you said, "This grant has nothing to do, for instance, with needle exchanges or a preference for needles over pipes and stuff like that."
Correct, no. Our main goal out of this grant, like I said, is the naloxone distribution and the overdose fatality review team.
Okay. Is it going to work?
I'm sorry?
Is it going to work?
I'm hoping so.
Yeah, I hope so too.
So is the 247,000, is that our end, or is that just our matching or?
No, the county matches nothing. This is all coming from state funds and federal funds.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to thank you for your continued dialogue when I have concerns. And you're, I, I know that you really care about this, and I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else to tell us today?
No, just that the, our program is really ramping up from, we, it's kind of been a slow process. But since then, we've developed the transportation, which we provide transportation for people in need for, that were in jail, that have been released. We take them to treatment facilities wherever we can fit them into. Once they're out, we can pick them up, take them to doctor's appointments, a... And we go throughout the county, so it's not just Bisbee, it's Douglas, Wilcox service and so on.
Okay, do you have like an approximation about how many people in the county are on a rehabilitation type program?
I don't have that number. I do have, because we're mostly on the transportation side. So once they're released, we transport. So since September, we've made 30 transports. Most of those are from here to a treatment facility outside of county.
Yeah, okay.
The big problem, if I may, is that basically people that are addicts don't want to talk about, "Oh, I'm an addict, let's go talk to the government." I do, write me down, I'll be a statistic and stuff like that. They're just not into that.
Right.
So, so that, so that, any kind of statistics that you get about it, they're going to be like skewed real low.
You know, when I was in Pima County with the Arizona, I always forget all these names, Arizona Economic Counties or something like that. One of the things they said is that we have, when we take people up for treatment and take them to a program in Tucson, it's just for the day, and then they're released. And then there's really no way for them to give back to Cochise. So they were saying, you know, that's what part of my thing about building a hospital with rehabilitation center and a mental health part of it would be really good, because then we wouldn't have to ship them out to Tucson. And I gather what they say, as you just really said, because they can't hold them overnight. They just have to release them back out, so.
Well, and the good thing with this is that, once they're released, and most of these plans that are public health social work out of the jail is, some of the programs are anywhere from 30 to 90 days. We are now seeing that, because we will offer transportation back. So some of those people are calling us back, wanting to come back to Cochise County.
Good.
You know, so we're seeing that end as well. So we will provide transportation back to their.
Down the road, I mean, it'd be good to have them all have programs here in the county.
Correct.
Their, close to their families. It's like, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Another subject that I felt with Ms. Hagel, and I've talked about it, is how do you get somebody that is irrational to become rational? In other words, they care about their life, no, don't take this risk to get high and stuff like that. So I think that maybe that's kind of a quarter to the whole.
Yeah.
Matter.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, there was a legislative matters thing, which we are not going to address today. So if there's no further discussion.
Not on these, but we have more meetings in the week.
Yes, okay, and I was going to say, before the 7th.
Oh, yeah, this is more for you to go over.
Okay, go ahead, tell us about that.
So after the regular meeting at 1 o'clock on Tuesday, we'll have the work session Supervisor Crosby, I believe you requested this on the Sheriff's Financial Position. So I've been working with our grants administrator, John Boswell, and the Sheriff's Office to go through all the grants that the Sheriff's Office has. And their award amounts, where we are in the reimbursement process for expenses, if, if it is a reimbursement grant, as well as how much of each grant has been spent. So we'll be, I'm going to send you each directly that PowerPoint presentation, because it's rather dense in numbers. You may want to take some time to review it carefully before that work session. John will be going over it, as well as myself and some staff from the Sheriff's Office. So that if you have any questions, you may think about that as you're reviewing it, and you can answer them.
Thank you.
Is that the kind of information you were looking to see?
I just scribbled down border discrimination. So if, if he's claiming a border nexus to these funding things that are coming in, I would like to see the border like closer than Portal, stuff like that. So I'd like to know, well, if he says, oh, this is the border county, what, the whole county is the border? I don't think the whole county is the border. I think the border is the border. So that's kind of what I'm getting at. What, what has he spent, spending the money that was designated as border money, border-related, all that kind of stuff? That's one of the things.
There might be questions for the Sheriff's Office then, regarding their specific operations with the grant money?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and so that is money that's been in the past, like, for instance, we're hearing a lot of Douglas, like Cochise College is going to be kind of turned over to be a federal training, you know? And so I don't know if he's going to talk about things that are coming down the pipeline.
Not in this particular work session, because it was a financial position. So we took that to mean the board was interested in hearing where they are with all the, because there is a long list of grants that the Sheriff's Office has, has been able to bring in to Cochise County. And so I think it's important for the board to know the fiscal relationship with our overall funds.
And, and I, and just to say that down the road, because there's a lot of talk, right? And I like to make sure where talk is talk and talk is real. And with this Cochise College, I mean, I see that that's what they're going to do with it, because I've been here for people who now their IDs are not for Douglas, they're for Sierra Vista, you know? And I've heard a lot of talk that it's going to become kind of a federal training school for, you know, border concerns. And I just like to know that. I mean, if that's the truth, which I have always, and I'll say this because we're in the public, felt that this is where the college is going, that, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to have this at least, because it's, it's actually, the Douglas campus is a charmer it was, is the same as when I went there in 1975. And I'm not going to apologize to anybody for saying what is true and what people feel. This college has moved to Sierra Vista, plain and simple. So if that's the case, which I 99.9% feel that it is, then I want to embrace whatever can be there, right? But I want to see if it's sustainable too, is it just going to be two years, three years, four years? So I'm saying that now, I don't know how this plays in with that. But down the road, I'd like this to maybe, when you get, so when he gets grants, do we know automatically about him? Okay.
Well, he brings them to the board for approval.
Because we have to approve any grant that comes, right? Except if it comes from.
There's some that, that do not require our approval.
And that might be for Bubba or something like that, private?
Yeah, that's, that's different altogether also. But there's some things that are, that have been earmarked, how about, how about Stone Garden? They always come before us. Do they require the board to, to approve them?
We do.
Okay, what about that get them? I'm pretty sure those do not, that's pretty small. So.
That'll be discussed as well on Tuesday.
One thing about the college, the Douglas campus has dorms, which in Sierra Vista does not.
Well, they tore down one dorm, and they're building dorms in Sierra Vista.
They just, yeah.
So, you know, it's like, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, perhaps it's a meeting we can set up.
I would love to, because, okay, you know, I mean, it's a done deal. I kind of knew it was a done deal back when they got so upset with me for saying that. But at this point, I want to embrace and figure out what we can do, because, you know, it is what it is. So how does Douglas recuperate from that?
And then following the Sheriff's Financial Position, we, because there's some interconnection there, we fit the Emergency Management Department's grants, because the sheriff has certain Department of Emergency Management, Arizona Department of Emergency Management, we'll also cover emergency management's financially. It's a shorter meeting, it's just half hour.
Just the whole jail district, jail cost, jail election thing, that's not going to go away. So we need to be talking, in my opinion, everything about the Sheriff's Office, his financial position in terms of jail district. What if, what if, what if a new election passes it again? What if a new election does not pass it again?
So when we talk about our budget, revenues, expenditures, that meeting on Monday, we have, do have some information to share with the board regarding how changes in the jail district could impact the general fund.
Okay, and the expenditure limit.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's going to be really interesting.
So that, that's on Monday?
Yep.
That was on budget meeting on Monday, then 10, okay.
So I've floated this idea before, and I'll say it again, I haven't heard back from Kathy Trayworth talking about the what ifs. In other words, borrowing money that is in the rainy day fund instead of going into debt and paying interest.
And so on April 14th, we have a meeting with the Treasurer regarding investments. And that might be a time to ask that question again, because the broker, her broker will be here as well. Investment broker.
And when does a discussion of what to do with, say that everything goes through and we have to suspend the tax, and we have the 18 million, whatever it may be, when do we talk about what happens with that? I mean, I'm kind of in favor of going to jail, I don't know who else is, but, but that conversation will be with.
I think we, as we go through this budget process, that'll be a recurring conversation as we start to develop that picture.
In my opinion, you can't keep it, Fifth Amendment, Fourth Amendment.
Yeah, but I don't know how you're going to understand.
Like, best to look into that over at Civil, we can do that. I've already talked to Dylan about, you know, this is something we should, we see it is coming.
Yeah, it's coming.
It's an issue, so we should get out ahead of it, happy to do that.
Thank you. I mean, and look at all our options, you know, I know how you feel, but, you know, I just want to be aware of everything that, that can be done.
Mm-hmm, and the legal ramifications, yeah.
Constitutional issues.
Exactly.
Then on Wednesday, April 9th, this is the meeting that was requested by the board for a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah.
So at 2 o'clock, they'll be here, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the board, to discuss responsibilities and the comprehensive plan.
So in this, in this meeting, it's like going to be like a little greeting meet, right?
And then we'll have a.
And we'll have, and we'll have a few sandwiches for the meeting, right, stuff like that, that's always helps. And then, are we going to, one thing I would like to talk about is also, I have somebody that's in District 2 that has never been to a meeting for over a year. He zooms, which is fine, but I don't think it's the same. If everyone else can come in once a month, I don't understand why he can't. I haven't really had a conversation, I've tried, I haven't been able to reach him. But I think we need to look at, you know, the requirements of what we expect of the planning and zoning. And I, you know, you can't be here always, all the time, but pretty much seems like everybody else here. And I think it makes a big difference in person than it does when you're on Zoom. You're just not as focused, you don't hear everything, you don't feel the pain of the people. I really feel that. So would that be something we could discuss here?
I think because, yes, in a broad sense, when you talk about a specific member, if that member's not here, it might be better just to.
Well, I'm just talking about like general, yeah. Yeah, I will, but generally, do we have anything in the bylaws that requires them to show up physically? And so that's what I'm.
Yeah, I think that falls under the responsibilities of number one.
Okay.
With regard to a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, is that going to include discussion of the matter that's come up a couple times, which is RU4 versus, I guess is RU137 with a waiver or a?
An SR123.
It will be one of those hot topic items, and Christine McLaughlin, the acting director right now, that since Dan has left, or will leave by the end of the week. I know she's been thinking about how to address that situation before another one comes to the board.
I did hear from the Opt-Ab community, who, you know, Kristen Sawyer, who feels that. I did hear from the opt-out community who, you know, Kristen Sawyer, who feels that he might have, I don't know what it is, but he might have a suggestion on how to do, deal with this, and so I, this is, is that, this session is open to anybody, they can't comment, right? So if he wants to show up.
Make them listen, and, and I think it's kind of, these are good things to brainstorm with the commission members to get their feedback as well on the concerns that the board has had, so that's the, the point of the meeting, I think.
Okay, so then, um, maybe down the road, we might have to do with the opt-out committee, maybe it's a meeting with the planning and zoning, they meet with the opt-out community, I'm not sure. But I just see that as another thing, the opt-out committee down the road, there's issues, you know, we need to at least look and address. And, you know, I mean, Mike, I, I would like to know more about what they do with the gray water, you know, and I know some that I'm not, I'm not gonna mention, but I'm like, wow, you, you get rid of your waste that way, I'm not sure that that's environmentally correct. I don't know how we would enforce it, but, um, it's kind of concerning me, so I guess we have, that was the whole thing where we were covering by international law regulations versus something that the county used to have standards or something?
Yeah, something we're gonna dive into with environmental health and find out what are the, the standards and make sure that's very clear out there, what?
Yeah.
What they can and can't do.
So that doesn't have to be here, but down the road, we're probably gonna have to address that. Um, I know we're gonna declare June sixth, so the month of June is the opt-out community kind of month. Um, and, and I think that we're unique and that we do want people to come here, but I think we also have to watch that it doesn't get to the point where we have a car with a shed over it, and there's like six of them, you know, I mean, when you go to E, was it Easy Acres or something like that, I think that's that area right by Grace's Corner, as you're going to Douglas, there's a like a truck, couple trucks with just like a little, I guess, I don't know how they do it, they open the door and then they go into a little shed or something? But, um, I think we need to kind of look at that too. I don't wanna see that, you know, I, I, I don't want to tell people what they can do with their property, but then there's that catch twenty-two, somebody who's had a property next to it for, you know, seventy, eighty years, now they're dealing with all these things, they, you know, she got, we've gotta find some kind of compromise. And I think the opt-out community is kind of willing to do that, but they're really growing, so.
Okay. Good topics to bring to the commission as well.
Yeah, gonna see Kathy, stop talking about work sessions.
Um, then on April tenth, Thursday, we have, um, the staff update and, um, regarding Trace Alamos Community Alliance concerns that the board heard from the, uh, residents and, um, from the Trace Alamos Community Alliance a few weeks ago, and so now, uh, Jackie Watkins has been working on, and Joe has been working on the staff response, and, and in the meantime, there've been some discussions with the residents, so we'll update the board on that.
Okay. All right, and that's a busy week, I think that's enough.
Hey, it's, it's, it's a lot. And, uh, in the meantime, we are in the background working on budgets.
Okay, well, there are being no further business before the board at this time, the next meeting will be a work session on Monday, April seventh, at ten a.m. in the hearing room pertaining to budgets, specifically early projections for revenues, expenses and expenditure limits, thank you, Sharon.
Your work, thank you guys.